If you will lead us to the pledge.
Councilmember Hornick.
Here.
Councilmember Lewis.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Here.
Mayor King.
Here. Uh, any reordering of the agenda?
None this evening.
Okay. Uh, any public comments?
No, sir.
Nope, okay. Uh, let's move on to the consent calendars to be minutes of July eleventh, twenty twenty four, regular city council meeting. This is claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four and fiscal year twenty four, twenty five. And designation of voting delegate and alternate for twenty twenty four, lead California cities annual conference business meeting. I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve.
I'll second.
Linda.
Okay. Member Lewis.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Silva.
Aye.
Councilmember Hornick.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
And Mayor King.
Aye. Okay, we will move on to presentations. We do have proclamation recognize Americans with disability act, uh, July twenty. And this is from the city of Bulton, a proclamation recognizing Americans with disabilities act day. Whereas the Americans with Disabilities Act ADA was passed on July twenty sixth, nineteen ninety to ensure the civil rights of citizens with disabilities and whereas the city of Bulton affirms the principles of equality and inclusion for persons with disabilities as set for by the state of California and embodied by the ADA, the laws of the state of California and ordinances of Santa Barbara County and the city of Bulton. And whereas the numerous organizations in the city of Bulton and the state of California work with constituents and communities to bring forth the promise of hope and freedom that is envisioned by the passage of the ADA. And whereas the city of Bulton celebrates July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four as the anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Acts through the presentation of this proclamation. And now therefore I, Mayor Dave King and the city of Bulton City Council do hereby recognize July twenty sixth, twenty twenty four as Americans with Disabilities Act Day in the city of Bulton and encourage the community to join in this observance presented the twenty fifth of July, twenty twenty four. Shannon, if you'd come up to the podium.
Right behind me. Good evening, Mayor King and council. Thank you for allowing me to accept the city of Bulton's ADA proclamation on behalf of the special needs community for the entire Santiness Valley. We applaud your supportive efforts to bring awareness and accessibility to the city for all. The city of Bulton is a leader and exemplary role model for inclusion. Thank you for stepping back to allow leadership for those with different experiences and perspectives to foster a sense of community for people with various abilities. True inclusion is not, not just inviting everyone to the table, but making sure that everyone has the right seat. Thank you for inviting us to the table. As we look, as we look forward to working with you to continue to demonstrate commitment to promote diversity and inclusion for everybody. Sincerely from the bottom of our hearts, thank you on behalf of the entire special needs community. And I invite anyone behind me in the support to introduce themselves and to express their gratitude.
Hi, I'm Beth Donati. I'm a professional in the community, working with young children with disabilities. Um, and it has been such a pleasure to help build more inclusive programs in this community. And I'm excited to continue working on doing that. And thank you for the support that we have in this room and these families to continue making this a place where everybody can experience love and joy in our valley.
Hi, my name is Claudia Rukelme and I'm a behavior analyst and we just expanded our business in the valley. And we are thrilled to be here and impact families in the valley. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Haley Hawthorne and I have a daughter with autism. And, uh, just found myself in this world. So here I am. I have two kids, one neurotypical and one with autism. So I am doing everything I can to make it a better experience for her. And this is really cool what you guys are doing. Thank you.
It's awesome.
Thank you.
Shannon, if we get all of you to come up here and we'll give you a presentation and we'll all.
Photo time.
Come up, everybody up.
All right, and thank you guys again for coming in. Right, let us move on to my pens, there we go. Uh, any public hearings?
No public hearings.
Uh, council member comments or items, John?
None, thank you.
David? I've got a few. Um, one is just, I think that with, thank you for being here today for the ADA proclamation, accepting it. I think that we've always talked about how proclamations are only as good as the following follows behind them. And so I think that as a council, we should look into inviting more people from our community who have these experiences to help kind of guide the way we've been talking about inclusion and accessibility for that, whether it's from a recreational standpoint, funding and things of that sort. So I just think that it'd be great for us to see ways that we can take the momentum we have here and the experts in the field and keep the conversation going so that we can actually start seeing some action taking place in the community. So I just, I don't know exactly how to get that started, but I would love to make sure we can have your information exchange with our city. That'd be wonderful. And then we can see what we can do as a city to further support it. So it's awesome, wonderful. Oh, a few others, sorry. One other one.
Good.
Okay. Um, just wanted to also bring up that we are continuing to have some of a semi truck parking situation on McMurray Road issue. Um, I know that we are looking at those hotels coming in soon and that will ask a bigger question of where will those trucks go after a certain amount of time? So I just think we may want to continue to look at options for long-term solutions for that, since at some point it's going to be a problem. We can't just keep moving from one public road to another. So I just wanted to put that on our radar that we may want to start exploring solutions that aren't just street parking for the semi trucks. And that's it.
Right, yeah, I think we are looking for places to put those. So in the near future, we may have spots for those trucks to go. Uh, Alicia.
So it's very well timed, but I've had some, uh, conversations with some community members that have differently able children. And we don't have any park, real park access for students or children in wheelchairs. So I wanted to know if we could look at, I, I honestly don't even know what those types of playgrounds look like or what types of options we have, but I would like for us to at least look into what it would take to include some of that in our parks.
Sure.
Thank you.
That's it.
Um, this is actually more of a follow-up comment for Scott and staff. I, I think we previously discussed potentially, uh, looking into uh, city of Bulton employee down payment assistance program or, uh, housing stipend or something like that. I just wanted to see if we still need to get concurrence from the city council on that, or is that something that we already have concurrence for on moving on?
I don't believe we have formal concurrence from the council. It's, that's something we want to look at.
Yeah.
If it is, um, you know, we've, we've done some preliminary work here and if that's something you want to discuss, we can put something together at an upcoming council meeting and, and at least throw out some ideas and see which way you want to go with that.
I, I mean, I would like at this point to just, if we can, I don't know if city council is open to it, but I think it would be a good idea. Um, look into it and get back to us about what we could do.
That'd have to be agendized as a budget.
We will agendize if it's a business item so that the council can fully discuss it and give staff direction. Um, unless it's got an agenda item, we, we can mention it briefly, but we can't really do anything with it.
Is it something we've done before and we can do again?
We, we, yes, we can do this again.
On a base, or a case by case.
Yes, we can look at different options for that. And, and there are, there are pluses and minuses to different directions to go, but we can bring that back to you in our report.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, and I do not have any comments or items, so we'll, we'll move on to written communications, Scott.
None this evening.
Okay, and committee reports, John?
I don't have any committee reports.
Alicia?
Because you're so gracious, I don't have any committee reports.
Uh, that's.
No.
David?
I've got two. So attended the CCWA meeting today and, um, thank you for letting me be the fabulous alternate for you, John.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Um, and so there is currently, we're in a Warren Act contract negotiation. Um, there is a discussion about, I, I learned a lot about water today, but, um, there is a discussion about the fact that, um, they're, they're proposing who we get our water from is proposing a five percent automatic conveyance loss that's added. And then I had to look up what that was. And apparently there is an element where we are able, we are expected to pay for water that is lost due to the conveyance of transportation from one water source to how it gets down to us as well as an evaporation caused that's within that. So there's a discussion of this five percent being automatically applied, which could increase water rates within beautiful decently drastically because we, five percent means we're buying five percent more than we need and don't actually receive it. Um, so that was a discussion that was brought up today. Um, and then there's also a discussion about the, um, changing of just how water years are structured within that. And finally, they'll be doing a repair of the Saninis pumping plant. So if you've ever been wondering about the Saninis pumping plant, it's getting repaired.
Is that five percent? Is that all for all of our, uh, water sources or would that just be state water projects?
It's any of this, I mean, I, first. Yeah, yeah, it's to be the state water. Um, and then we, I also attended a housing meeting today for the affordable housing. And, um, three C had another presentation there. And so two things that came up from it, one is that cities that are willing to install level three chargers, which are the super fast chargers, fast chargers, super fast is relative. Um, they are, uh, able to do rebates up to fifty percent of coverage for the total cost for equipment, equipment and installation. And their fiscal year runs until the end of September. So if we are interested in those grants, we may want to move quickly on that or identify that. So that's kind of up there. And then for installations, if anyone's installing an ADU and you're going to go fully electric, there is a five thousand dollar rebate for all ADUs that are available as well. And you would get that through three CE as well. So they were just talking about ways to make it more electrifying of your grid.
I have another question, of course. Sorry, uh, they said that.
I only did this because I knew you'd ask questions.
Uh, so there was a fifty percent rebate you set for level three charges for municipalities or is it, did everybody?
So that you could get a rebate through the city, right? The city could get up to fifty percent of a rebate for installation of level three trout, level three chargers that are used from like a public access situation.
That's the way to go.
There you go.
All righty. Uh, and I had an SB CAG meeting. And that was one of the shortest SB CAG meetings in the history of SB CAG meetings. Uh, it was basically a presentation of a five-year, uh, projection for, uh, SB CAG. And then, uh, I did go down to Cerritos yesterday, uh, four and a half hours down and four and a half hours back. Yeah, uh, and that, uh, the JPIA was, uh, basically a presentation of the structure, organization of the, uh, JPIA. And then, uh, there was a presentation on finance, uh, and we had to vote on uh, the finance presentation. So that was the two meetings that I've been to lately. Um, anyone else? Nope. Okay, let us move on then to business items. Um, uh, number five will be approval of track map three, one, zero, six, one for the BUE seventeen project. And the lead on this is going to be our city manager, Scott Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry. Do I need to recuse before?
Thank you. I was gonna just say that.
I will be watching and come back in.
Okay. All right.
And, and just for the record, uh, the council member is recusing himself because his, um, real property, uh, is, is primary residence is within five hundred feet of the project site. Because it's primary residence, we don't need to give the address here on the record. But, um, he's recused himself from all items regarding this project and is continuing to do so. Thank you, councilman.
Right. Mayor King, um, members of the city council. The item before you this evening, this, the final track map, um, is typically, uh, something we would place on consent calendar. This is generally a ministerial action uh, taken on the part of the city council, which is just an acknowledgement that, uh, all of the conditions of the tentative track map uh, that were, uh, set by the planning commission and or council have been met and therefore the track map is ready to be recorded. Uh, however, in the case of this particular project, we placed it on the primary, uh, or on the business section of the agenda because there's another item that's going along with it that needs the council's, um, uh, attention. As the city council is aware, there is a tentative track map and a, um, uh, final development plan. Sorry, my, my planning jargon law escaped me for a moment there. Final development plan, uh, that have been approved for this particular project, the BUE seventeen project. The final development plan is still in the works and it has, um, it, it's, uh, they're, they're not what, not what, excuse me, not quite ready to move forward with the construction of that plan. However, they are prepared at this point. Given the length of time that this project has been approved to record the track map to ensure that the, the recordation of the track map can take place before the tentative track map finally expires, which will happen within the next month, I believe. Um, in order to ensure that, um, a, a particular condition of that, uh, project is maintained, we have places on the side and then, uh, on the business portion of the agenda and have included in the packet, a draft agreement for the council's consideration. This particular agreement, uh, has been placed in here to ensure that the condition which requires that only emergency access be granted or, or, or that the let me back up, to ensure that the access point, uh, which is taken from the Rancho de Maria neighborhood is only accessed once construction is complete for emergency purposes. That's a condition of the, of the, um, uh, final development plan. We wanted to ensure that regardless of what happens with that final development plan in, in the future, that that condition be retained here. So what we have asked is for, uh, the applicant to, uh, consent to enter into an agreement here. And this agreement essentially states that within one hundred and twenty days of the recording of this track map, they will record a covenant on their property, which, um, restricts any post-construction access to their property to, um, emergency access only. Uh, they will also, um, be discussing with, uh, Rancho de Maria neighborhood, how they want to handle their side of the property line and the easement that exists there. But regardless of how that works out, the portion of the property that starts, uh, at their fence and moves on to the applicant's property would be restricted to emergency access only. There is an order that this needs to happen in. So, uh, if you read the, the recommendation, what staff is recommend, excuse me, what staff is recommending is that the city council authorize, uh, the city manager to execute the agreement that's in the, um, in the packet. And once that, um, document is executed by both the city manager and the, um, applicant, then the, uh, council would, uh, is authorizing the recordation of the track maps. If there's any technical questions regarding the track map itself, uh, Rose would be happy to answer those. If there's any legal questions, I'm sure the city attorney would be happy to chime in. But, um, I just wanted to put this on the record for you that this is being done in a business items fashion instead of a consent calendar fashion because this agreement is going along with it. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I conclude my report.
All right, thanks Scott. I'll bring it back to council. Any questions for staff? John?
Yeah, the, um, the easement, there's going to be, uh, blocking easement or bicycle easement or car. It's going to be completely blocked.
This is, the, the easement that we're referring to is not a trail easement. It's, it's a vehicular access easement and it will be completely, it's, the plan is to completely close it off.
So if somebody wants to go to the store, they gotta go.
They gotta go around.
Industrial way. They can't cut across.
Well, they could use the trail easement once the trail is completed, but that doesn't, that doesn't traverse the Rancho de Maria neighborhood.
Can they get to the golf course?
Um, maybe.
Well, we have.
Ye- yes, it depends on how the trail acts. It's, it's potentially possible, uh, based on how the trail, um, access goes through there.
But, uh, does the city have a, a common easement with this development as well?
No, not between the two neighborhoods.
Was it, no, between the, the golf course and the, and the.
No, there's no easement access other than, like I said, the potential trail easement, uh, that's.
Right, but not an easement, but do we share a property line or is it?
We do share.
Only the condom, does the, does the homeowner's end at the property of the golf course? Or does the, or the, or does the community, um, line go all the way to the river?
The BUE seventeen property does share a property line with the golf course. The, the, the golf course yeah, sits between the BUE seventeen property and the river. And yes, there is, there is a shared property line there with this property.
And is there, is there, uh, is it the, the community property between us or, I mean, if somebody wanted to walk over from this project to the golf course, do they also have to go all the way around?
There is, there is existing currently a fence. Now that, how that gets resolved in the future with the trail is up for discussion.
Okay.
But, um, at this point, it is, it is, um, it is separated.
But we could establish a trail so that people could walk to the golf.
We, we have a trail easement and we'll have to, you know, how that trail gets improved would inform whether or not access would take place through there. So thank you.
David?
Um, just so I can understand visually what, so I, like, where, where we are in our neighborhood, there is, I can't think of the, I can't think of the name of it, but there's the.
I'm sorry.
Well, there's the road access that we have. That's between our.
Glanora.
Glanora, okay. So is this a similar concept where there's like the pillars that separate it so you can't drive through? But it's like only for emergency access that you have it?
The, no, this is, uh, that's vehicular access, um, emerg- emergency access only.
Mm-hmm.
In this particular case, it would be any access. So in other words, there will be a fence or a gate at the easement that will be closed all the time.
Yeah.
And used only for emergency access. So you won't have pedestrian access through there.
Gotcha. Okay. So there's, it's, it's completely sealed off except for emergency access for it.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and then my second question is who? Who is the person who gets to ensure that that's being like, who's the, who's the party that's able to ensure that that's maintained?
Well, this is this, when this agreement is, is executed and then subsequent to that agreement being executed, the, uh, there, there is a covenant required to be recorded on their property within a hundred and twenty days.
Mm-hmm.
At that point, it's a, it's a deed restriction on the property. So anyone, I'm assuming anyone who's aggrieved could, could, the city could step in, the neighboring property could step in and, and enforce that.
Right, yes. Um, the city manager had it right. Any, any interested party who has a loss, the city expressly will, will be allowed to. And then as the city manager said, if a, if a, a neighborhood member felt that it would was blocked open somehow and people were using it, that has a negative impact on the neighborhood. So they could, they could bring an action.
Okay, so this isn't a requirement of self policing situation. There's actually, uh, people could, okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and I do not have any questions myself. Uh, I will open. Stand by. Okay, I will open this up for, uh, pu- public comments on this item. And I do have two speakers on this. First one is Nancy Dorwin. Oh yeah, you need to bring it up to Linda. Or John?
John Dorwin, one oh four, Six Flags Circle. I'd ask that you speak up because I, uh, have my one good ear, uh, hacked after some surgery, uh, yesterday. Covenant note on sheet two of the map says the covenant will be recorded on the property, which will be binding on any future tenants or the property owners of the subject properties. The covenant will limit ingress and egress through the eastern property access point as shown on the map bordering Rancho de Maria subdivision to emergency or construction access only. It will further indicate that no private ingress or egress will be permitted through this portion of the easterly properly access point. The problem comes in with construction access. The original nineteen eighty five easement is for one lot, twenty-three acres, which in nineteen eighty five was owned agricultural, had one single family residence on it, according to the county. And what you're proposing here is a subdivision, which is going to create at least five lots and have emergency access for potentially hundreds of people and construction access. The current easement does not allow or anticipate for heavy equipment accessing the property for construction access. What authority does the city have to can, create this condition over private property without the property owner's consent? The city has no authority to record such a condition that will alter the existing limited easement for just one lot to a five lot subdivision. The rule in Latin is Nemo dot quad non a bet. No one can give what they do not have. Neither the city nor the developer has any easement for emergency or construction access for a subdivision over the Rancho de Marie one owner's common area under the terms of the nineteen eighty five easement. Sheets two, three, and four of the proposed track map show the record easement for ingress and egress changing to a recorded easement to overburden the surveyant tenement by allowing construction and emergency access. Note sheet four incorrectly labels this easement. It confuses the easement off of industrial way with the easement over the Rancho de Marie homeowners association common area. This is a technical defect on the map and the map can't be recorded with that kind of a defect. The recorded CCNR is requiring written, written consent of a super. The recorded C C N R is requiring written, written consent of a super majority of the owners. No vote of consent to modify the existing one-lot easement into a five-lot subdivision easement with emergency and construction access has been held pursuant to the Rancho de Marie C C N Rs section twelve point one subdivision I I I as a property right under the recorded C C N Rs. The city can't change the nineteen eighty-five property easement without Rancho de Marie one owner's vote by owners of the land subject to the easement. It's our position that if you record the map, this will be an illegal subdivision. The city's approval of the subdivision map for recording creates a false instrument within the context of California Penal Code, section one one five. The recording of a new easement terms by the city and the subdivision map is an illegal alteration of the current and existing Rancho de Marie owners association C C N Rs. Unreasonable use, heavy equipment loads overburden the easement for ingress and and egress across the basketball court and the association's common area between the end of Shadow Mountain Drive and the subject entryway to the proposed subdivision. This change of use of easement violates the rule against overburden and surcharge so as to damage the servient tenement of Rancho de Marie one common area. The most recent case is Zissler against Saville, Z I S S L E R versus S A V I L L E, two thousand eighteen, twenty-nine, Calab fifth, six thirty. The test that comes out of the Zissler decision of our District Court of Appeal in Tora after a trial before Judge Anderley in Santa Barbara Superior Court regarding an overburden issue for a, a development case in Montecito is the test is provided that the use does not unreasonably interfere with the enjoyment of unreasonably damaged or materially increase the burden on the servient estate. Heavy equipment access will violate the Zissler rule. So, we don't want you to record this map with any reference at all to the existing nineteen eighty-five easement because we don't believe the city has ever acquired a right to alter that easement or to put it on any subdivision map. And until there's a vote by a majority, pardon me, a super majority of the Rancho de Marie homeowners, there cannot be any conveyance or alteration of that easement. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next up is going to be Nancy Dormin.
Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. Nancy Dorwin, one oh four, Six Flags Circle. Uh, just a couple of questions about uh, Scott's remarks. The extension on this T P M, this was, they were still working on their second extension. So we understood that that expires in August in a few weeks. But then there is a third extension that they could apply for, and that would end in August two thousand twenty-five. So the urgency to do this without working with our association and the members under the C C N Rs allowed to make their consent vote, uh, uh, you know, tally. Uh, I think is, it, it, it's premature to go ahead with actually this process at this point. And what's very apparent to me in the attachment number two to the staff report, which is the draft version of this agreement between the city and the developer is that nowhere is there uh, indication that they have the consent of Rancho de Marie homeowners. So I think uh, you're just eliminating the, the, the other half of the easement. So I think you need to kind of look at what you need to do to come back to Rancho de Marie and get the consent vote taken. And then the board can officially announce the results of this vote and make some formal writing to the city to say, we're either in agreement or we're not. And that is the most uh, uh, open, transparent way to handle this situation. The other thing is, is that attachment two, item three, bullet point two addresses when, what will be excluded from this agreement? And it reviews the fact that it's going to go and exclude any permits that might relate to Zaca Creek Bridge. Well, under the conditions of approval back in two thousand eighteen, Zaca Creek Bridge is the first thing to be built. And the only way you can build that is to have access through Rancho de Marie. So this agreement doesn't do Rancho de Marie any good if we don't want these big earth movers and tractors and everything else coming through there. So we haven't had our voice heard. And we're being excluded from this process. And I think that it would behoove the city council to say, look, let's take a step back, let's work with the homeowners and, and go forward from the homeowner's consent vote, which is required under the C C N Rs. We met with the city council, or excuse me, we met with Scott Wolf and Andrea uh, Kiefer in January of this year, had a meet and confer, went over all the conditions that we had objected to earlier. And uh, we talked about having to rewrite some conditions particularly related to our eastern boundary fence where the, the project calls for every, the construction to utilize property beyond that fence because that's not our true property line. Well, we never got any kind of uh, rewrite draft on that item as well. So I think if the conditions are going to be approved as part of this tract map, that that needs to stop at this moment just to rewrite one condition about the eastern boundary of the project. Because otherwise you are taking um, liberty with our property line and our fence line and the property between those two. So I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have another speaker on this one, Jim Bullock.
Mayor King, I'm to the council. Appreciate you allowing me, oh. Appreciate your uh, allowing me to speak here today. Um, I, I had come here with all kinds of things to say and uh, uh, John Nesbit once said that strategic planning is worthless if you don't have a strategic vision. And uh, I think this uh, comes to that point. And, and I'm a little bit upset. Um, uh, with, with, with Councilman Sanchez, because there's years of service here for you to imply, or may, maybe I infer, that the city could use its power to maybe change the fence a little bit to bypass what we're doing here. I'm a little bit upset with that. Uh, when you said, well, we own the golf course, could they go through that way? That, that, it's a little bit disappointing to me. However, um, I got something today in the mail from uh, uh, from uh, my bank saying, uh, be careful of uh, these uh, imposters trying to scam you saying, oh, you gotta get this, it's in a hurry right now. Uh, you gotta reply uh, right now because uh, it, there's a deadline on this. And if you don't do it right now, and I felt like one of these guys with the little, you know, cups and the, and the peas in it like that. Well, I think that's kind of what's happening here because we're being moved to and they're distracting us. Really happening. And what's really that the easement is only for one piece of the property. It's not for the whole thing, but they're distract us with, oh, it's uh, it's uh, it's for the whole property. In fact, that meeting that we had with Scott in January, we specifically, and I have it in my notes, noted that the easement was for one piece of the property. Yet when we came to a meeting of the homeowners association, Scott flipped. And he said, no, 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 I never said that. It was for the entire piece of property. You were there at the meeting. Everyone was at the meeting. So I'm, I'm concerned that we're talking about a piece of property that is owned by the homeowners association, by the own and the homeowners association and that piece of property, which is not individually owned, but owned by every member of the homeowners association of Rancho de Maria all along that, that fence line there. Um, and what I was really wanted to say at the beginning was in terms of, of planning, and I'm looking at, at all of the wonderful things that the planning commission has come up with here, that, that the approved projects in the building. And I was, I was trying to get back from uh, Albertson's the other day, and it took me four cycles through the stoplights at, at McMurray and uh, and two forty-six to get through. Uh, and so I, I was, you know, in thinking of, of this project here and industrial way in spite of the easement, if it took me, if it took me four, four, four light passings to get through, just to get on to two forty-six. Garden apartments, which eighty-nine units.
Sorry, hold on, no, that's not it. Rose, you gotta have to unmute.
Okay, I, I'm gonna finish with this. Eighty-nine units on McMurray Road. I, and it took me four light cycles to get through. And those eighty-nine units and with this strategic vision that I've never seen yet with all the building that's going on, how are those eighty-nine units going to get through with the other people trying to get through in those four, those four? Yeah, we have, we have great planning. But do we have the vision? And this is just another, uh, another example of there's no vision. We got all this great planning going on. We're putting up hotels. We're putting up things on, on the Avenue of the Flags. We're putting up things everywhere. But McMurray, you're putting, you're putting in more hotels, you're putting in more, everything, more buildings, more on, 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 on industrial way? Where are the people gonna, where are they gonna drive their cars? Or I know you want them to use the bike lanes. That would be great. I'd like them to use the bike lanes. So but guess what? They're not going to. Thank you very much.
And that is a bone.
I know you're not the planning commission, so I know you're the.
No, but I have a bone of contention without myself. That is state mandated projects that we had no control over. That did not come from the city of Beaufort. Okay, moving on to Lori Oakley.
I apologize.
Struggle is real. Okay. Um, my name is Lori Oakley and I live at Two Victory Drive. I've been a resident here for almost forty years. I have only, mine's gonna be super short, but I have just one question. Scott, when you keep saying the construction, when the construction is complete, I'm assuming, I'm hoping that you're meaning the construction of the temporary bridge, not the whole construction of the project because you have a lot of access to that, that parcel through industrial way. And we are under the impression that it is just in order to build, build a temporary bridge, not the entire construction project, which could take a long, long time.
Scott, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, for this one in particular, I do have responses for other speakers as well. The, the, the question we have here is this um, the way the conditions of the permit are written, the um, the industrial way bridge access, once it's constructed, is to be the primary access. But as we've discussed previously, there may be instances where it's required to take access through Rancho de Maria in order to finish the project out. That's not to be the primary access, but particularly as construction is um, wrapping up, there may be circumstances which require access to be taken from the Rancho de Maria side because there is not access, adequate access for that kind of equipment from the um, uh, from the uh, the bridge access side. But that should be few and far between. And with the agreements we have already in place, the uh, the applicants are required to give the homeowners association notice. I believe it's seventy-two hours in advance of when that's to take place. And the city engineer has to be informed and has to agree that it's necessary to take it through that.
So we're talking, if it were a piece of pie, is it a, a, an eight, the twelfth of the access will be on through Rancho de Maria?
I would be surprised if it were even that much.
Okay.
Un, un, until the bridge is, until the bridge is completed, that will be Rancho de Maria access will be the primary access, the only access. But since the requirements, the projects state that the Brit, the access through Rancho de Maria is to be used for the bridge construction until that bridge construction is built. And then once that bridge is built, it's to be the bridge. You have a fairly limited span of time and a fairly limited span of traffic that will come through there uh, before the bridge is completed. And once the bridge is completed, it should all come through the industrial wayside with I, I can't even think of instances where it could happen. But again, once, once street improvements are in place, once buildings are there, it's possible that in order to access portions of utilities or, or other aspects of the project, the only way to get a piece of equipment in might be from the Rancho de Maria side. That's
Okay.
That's kind of the worst case.
Okay, thank you. And then my other question is, um, going back to Mr. Sanchez says about the um, residents of the hub project being able to walk over to utilize the golf course. How ca- how are we going to be able to prevent them from coming over into our playgrounds, into our barbecue area, using our restrooms? Um, how, how does that, how do you, how do you see that playing out?
Can, can we answer that question uh, at the end with responses to everything else?
Yes.
Cause that, that is something that I know we're, we've got, we both.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna try to address all of them.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any other public comments on, on Zoom?
Yeah.
No, okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close public comment. I'm gonna bring it back to the council, but I would like you, Scott, to address all of these issues that were uh, brought up during the public comment.
Okay, I, I can address most of these.
Specifically, the technical defect on the nineteen eighty-five map. I would have a question about that. Maybe that is a legal answer for you.
That's a legal answer.
Okay, Scott?
Question that you can address when you're looking at it? In terms of um, mitigation efforts and safety efforts, what is required to be in place? Like I lived on that main strip there before we moved to the house we're at now. Kids play in that street constantly. What mitigation efforts or safety efforts are the builders required to have to make sure that when they have these types of access, that kids are safe? Like, are they having flaggers? Like, those types of things, like?
Okay, that, that's.
If you can add that.
I, I can't, but I'm sure there are city, city engineers.
Okay, thank you.
So let me start with the nineteen eighty-five easement. This um, this final map has nothing to do with the nineteen eighty-five easement except that the area being restricted lies directly adjacent to the easement, but on the development parcel. And so what this map is saying is that that drive aisle kit, on, on the development parcel can only be used for certain things. It can only be used for emergency access, construction access during construction. That's what it can be used for. This doesn't touch anything on the Rancho de Maria side. It doesn't purport to. The map can't touch anything on the Rancho de Maria side because it doesn't include the Rancho de Maria side on the map. The agreement can't change the easement. To the extent that the H O A believes that the nineteen eighty-five easement would be overburdened, that would be a civil matter uh, between the H O A and the developer. Uh, between the HOA and the developer. That is not a matter involving the city. Way back when this was approved, the city was presented the easement and at that time it was analyzed. It says that it's an access easement. It's for ingress and egress. The city at that time took that as allowing ingress and egress. It didn't have any limitations. And so this project has moved ahead with that. Um, and the idea, not on the map. But on all of the development plans, the idea has been that it would be after construction, emergency access. The whole concept of development there is to have it go up and down industrial way. With the understanding that it would need to be used early in the process and like any property have two ways of accessing. Rancho de Maria itself has two driveways or two streets accessing onto Avenue. So I, I'm not concerned that the city is at any legal risk. I don't believe that it creates an illegal subdivision. Um, as the city manager said early on, other than the agreement to further restrict this for the benefit of the residents. This would be something that you would see on the consent calendar and it would simply sort of slide forward. Um, but, uh, from a legal perspective, I, I don't see these concerns. Uh, and I don't see any risk for the city, so you're, you're free to move forward with what legally is otherwise a ministerial act. Um, in terms of some of the details of development, the, the fence line where we are, I leave that up to the city manager. Thank you.
And before we go on to that, Scott, let me just clarify. Back in nineteen eighty-five, that's when they developed Rancho de Maria. So that easement basically was given to the property owner of that piece of property in discussion without restrictions. So that was, if, if anybody built on that piece of property, that was an easement through Rancho de, de Maria. Onto that piece of property with that easement in place, correct?
It is a very vague and very broadly written easement. It doesn't have the kinds of restrictions that we would put on it today. Which is why in, before either Scott or myself were here, even back then. The previous city manager and their staff were putting more restrictions on the use of that easement than the easement itself. It has in it. So, um, you're, you're absolutely right. With the development of Rancho de Maria, that parcel would be landlocked other than industrial way. And you have to have two, two accesses to develop our property. Um, from a fire, uh, perspective and, and just a life safety perspective. So whatever was intended back then, I don't know. All I know in looking at the easement is that it's very broad.
So what this is going to do though, after the development is this gonna basically shut this easement off? And the developer is agreeing to do that. Is that correct?
That is correct. Okay.
Scott?
Um, yeah, let me, let me go a step further. As, as the city attorney mentioned, it, it doesn't do anything to the easement that exists on the Rancho de Maria property. Other than make the fact that there is an easement there moot unless it's for emergency purposes. Because even if someone could drive in through the Rancho de Maria side, once they got to the property line, there is no legal right to continue onto the BUE seventeen site. Unless it's for emergency access purposes. And that could be enforceable by a, any, any interested party is, is. City attorney mentioned previously. With regard to the timing question, um, there is another extension available for the final development plan. That would take place in later this year or February or February is, is when the, the next extension take place. Or is that the extension?
The final.
Deadline for the final.
Correct, yes.
Subdivision maps have a different schedule and a different time limitation than our development entitlements do. And in this case, the subdivision is in its final extension. It cannot be extended beyond the expiration date. Which is?
Um, August twenty-second, I believe.
August twenty-second.
Right.
So there, there is no extension beyond that. At, uh, at, at the point of August twenty-second, that the map fails to. It just disappears. It expires. Um, that's why the developer has presented this under this timeframe. And not waited until they're ready to go with the rest of the development. The, the obvious conflict here that, that occurred to staff was it's okay, generally speaking, to have the map finalized. Because without the project, you can't build anything on it, but once you subdivide the property into multiple pieces of property. Now you've got three pieces of property and you've got one access easement. And that access easement is supposed to be for emergency access only. And so we went back to the applicant. We said, we need an agreement. That would not allow access through that property because once you've got three, now, now. The, the issue that Mr. Dorwin has brought up on a number of occasions comes into play. We wanted to protect the, the homeowners of Rancho de Maria from that eventuality all along and this agreement will do that. So it doesn't need to affect the Rancho de Maria portion because by affecting the BUE seventeen side of it. There's no way to get to the Rancho de Maria portion of that, um, or, or across that property unlawfully other than for construction or, or. Um, emergency access purposes. With regard to the bridge access, I, I think noted that the bridge access is there. It is required. Um, it is required to be the primary access point, um, across the property. I don't know if I missed another component of that question as it came up, but I, I think that, that, that should cover it. And, um, with regard to the conditions of approval, a, as I've mentioned already. The conditions of approval cease to exist for the subdivision when the subdivision is, is, is recorded. And all of the conditions that relate specifically to the subdivision have to be met in order for the subdivision to be recorded. The access provision of this is a, is a requirement, the emergency access provision of this is a requirement of the development plan. The, the, the project itself, the, 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 the construction. Um, and so without that, um, it, it, the. The emergency access provision doesn't have to be met for the subdivision. It does have to be met for the construction plan. But to, uh, again, to avoid the situation where the subdivision is approved, but the development plan never comes to fruition. We wanted to ensure that the, that the, uh, emergency access provision was left in there. Hopefully that answers all the questions. If I, if I missed something, if I didn't get to it, I'm, I'm happy to.
I, I, I have one, um, the member of the public asked and, and council member Sanchez had talked about access to the golf course. Uh, that's not part of the map. That is part of the development plan. As of right now, there is an easement. In favor or, or there is proposed to be, there's nothing on the map yet. But there is proposed to be an easement in favor of the Rancho de Maria residents across the development parcel. To industrial way so that if they desire to walk across the development parcel. To some of the entertainment facilities on industrial way, they can do so. The exact way in which that gate would be locked was going to be under the current development plan, subject to discussion with the HOA. But it was to basically be a one-way thing. You, you would not be able to use it without a code or a key. Or something that would allow people through and the Rancho de Maria side would have that code or key. The development parcel side would not. So as of right now, they wouldn't have access to the golf course, but.
And let me go a step further with that. This, the, the meeting that was referenced in January, the discussion with, during which, uh, the planning director and I. Met with members of the homeowners association and the, um. Discussion was such that there would be conditions that were revised based upon some. Um, a, a change of opinion on the part of the homeowners association in that they did not, apparently do not want that gate open. They, they don't want a pedestrian gate allowing them access in and out. They want that accessway and the trail easement, uh, onto their property removed. Um, we will, as we mentioned, that we will be happy to do that once we get notification from. Either the homeowners association or the super majority of members, however, the association wants to present that to us. That that, um, easement is no longer, and gate access is no longer desired. We will remove the condition to have that gate installed. Um, with regard to the other conditions that were discussed, most of them had to do with a discrepancy between. The property line as it exists on paper and on the ground, uh, versus where the fence is built. Uh, the fence that, that right now, uh, denotes the, the property boundary between the Rancho de Maria neighborhood. And the BUE seventeen neighborhood is actually not the property line. It actually sits about twelve feet to the west of there. So a portion of what is looked at as the BUE seventeen site right now actually belongs to Rancho de Maria. And so there's some, there's been discussion about amending some of these conditions to avoid confusion. That may result from a strict reading of the inter, of the conditions as they're written right now to kind of clarify that. So that we don't have any confusion going forward. I, in all reality, when the surveyors come out and they mark the site for construction, that will be the new property line. The question then becomes what happens to the property between the existing fence and the, uh, and the Rancho de Maria neighborhood? And that's really for the Rancho de Maria neighborhood to, to decide, but we will be happy to make those changes to the conditions. Uh, to clarify that as much as possible, but again, that, that, those particular things have to do with improvements. That are part of the development plan, not the subdivision map, so it's not.
And, and I, and I will say under planning and zoning law, California planning and zoning law. We can amend those conditions for clarity or the director has the power to deem substantial compliance. So if, if it doesn't make sense to go back and hold public hearings for an amendment, the director can simply say. Rather than the fence having to be at the current fence line, replacing the existing fence, the fence has to be at the property line. And then there won't be an issue of, of taking any property. Um, I think we need to answer the council member's question, which I believe would be, um, director has.
Oh, correct. Uh, Rose, you want to comment regarding, uh, safety precautions and procedures for construction access through neighborhoods?
So typically, if they're coming in with oversized vehicles, there's always a lead, a lead vehicle that's running in with the flags and kind of. Making that clear space through that areas. They're always looking for pedestrian, making sure there's, there's clear through that point. If there's construction activities, yeah, there's definitely gonna be more, um, cones, signage. Depending, I think like there's a utility connection, a sewer connection that may go up, um, up one of the, the driveways. And that would be sectioned off with laggards and trap control and all that, but. Typically there is, yeah, lead car that would be paving the way, so to speak, for oversized vehicles to come into that area.
Yeah, public hearings closed. Okay, I, I, I understand that, but I'm sure on, once construction starts, they're not gonna be racing down Shadow Mountain with ten-wheelers. Just to clarify on the fence line, the fence line basically is east of the property line on the BUE project. Correct. So at some point in history, somebody put that twelve feet shy of the property adjoining Rancho de Maria.
It's the, the, the existing fence line and the property line are not parallel, so that. Where the access easement at, it's about a ten to twelve foot, uh, separation. As you get down closer to the golf course, it, it drops down to zero at some point.
Okay, yes. So we don't know who did that, but at some point in history, somebody did not put it on the existing property.
It was, it was either the developer of the golf course in the Rancho de Maria neighborhood. Or someone relied on a fence line that was previously there without surveying it and.
Okay, all right, I will bring it back to council and I will, um. I will open it to further questions since there's, uh, quite an issue with this apparently. John, you have any questions?
Yeah, a bunch of questions. The, um, temporary bridge, if we build a temporary bridge. Then is that waiting to put a permanent bridge in or are we gonna do a temporary bridge? And then also put the permanent bridge in?
It, there'll be two bridges.
There may be a temporary bridge, um, and, and Rose, correct me if this is, if your understanding now is different. But my understanding is there may be a temporary bridge to begin with, to start to move some of the major construction equipment onto the site. While the, um, the permanent bridge construction is getting, uh, staged. The permanent bridge construction should be, um, relatively complete. Obviously, there'll be some improvements after all the construction is done. They'll come through and they'll cap the roadway and add some other improvements to it, but.
That's essentially correct. I mean, the, the final bridge is a prefab, so it'll be pre-built, so to speak. So they will, while that's under construction being manufactured, there will be a temporary bridge in it.
The temporary bridge construction will be just the time to build a bridge and as soon as that's done, there'll be no more access to Rancho de Maria. Right? So we only have one, one little window where they're gonna build a, a temporary bridge. And then there won't be any other reason to have trucks running through Rancho de Maria.
There, there shouldn't be. The majority should be coming through industrial way, but as Scott mentioned. We don't know if there's a certain piece of equipment or whatever that necessitates going that other direction, but the idea.
You get the, the bridge in, the temporary bridge, there'll be no more, yeah, unless there's something special, there won't be.
Right, right, correct.
So that's the initially what we need to do, you know, and they have to drive to Rancho de Maria to build temporary bridge.
Yeah, correct.
And, um, the property line difference with the eastern, uh, border. Part of that is also the border of, uh, the golf course is, and is that difference in property line? The same as the Rancho de Maria difference in property line?
No, no, the, the, the difference between the two property lines, um, changes because it's not at a. They're not completely parallel, so there's an angle at some point, so. That property line will be adjusted with new fence, um, built the time they develop.
Yeah, I'm sure that's gonna get rectified. They're gonna just put the twelve feet back.
The, the, the property line is what the property line is. The question is, what do you do with the property that's been between those properties, uh, between those two? Iterations of the property line and the decision for that because it lies on Rancho de Maria's property is Rancho de Maria's decision.
Right.
The reason I'm asking is because we, we share the property line and so does Rancho de Maria. So the property line that the city owns is owned by five thousand people and the people, and the property line. For the Rancho de Maria is just Rancho de Maria. So we, we have a, a similar. Uh, use, so if our, if our use is not restricted and not, uh, gated off and, and that. Isn't that something that if, if it's part of a parks, you know, it's a, it's a city park? And are we gonna build barricades across and not let anybody come to the golf course?
That's, that's not a part of this project. There's an existing fence there and the, um, that fence is. We have a golf course fence. It's a city fence and then the development will, the developer will put in their own fence on that side of the property. If there is a desire to alter that fence, then we would need to have a, a, a hearing regarding that. But that's not a part of the project at this point.
Right, yeah, okay. Uh, Lisa, you have any questions?
David? Yeah, uh, it's probably gonna be more vague in concept, so I'm, I mean, I'll need your guys' help to walk me through this, but. From what it sounds like, from what we have from public comment just now is there's a semblance or at least a drop, a break in communication. That has left some people feeling like their interests are not being represented by the city in a way that's authentic to what they've been communicating. This is a ministerial project or this was ministerial in nature, but from what I've gathered, it sounds like the reason this is a business item is because. We are active or you, the intention of the city was to actively protect the interests of Rancho de Maria. Is that correct in terms of? Could you maybe just, there's a lot of legal terms that have been used and there is not an easy thing to follow. And it gets to the point where you get frustrated and you just feel like, I don't care. I just, I know I'm mad type of thing. Could you maybe just explain to me? What is the intention that the city is doing that lets the residents of Rancho de Maria know that their interests are being protected? Or the, the goal is to protect their interest. It sounds like that was the intent of the city. Could you just, in layman's term, explain that so that the council understands what was the goal of this?
The intent of the city council when it approved this project initially, both the final development, well, the final development plan and the tentative track map together. The intent was to ensure that the access, um, to the Rancho de Maria, de Maria property was used for. Emergency purposes only once construction was complete. That's the intent. Those two projects have been going forward together, but as I mentioned, we have different expiration dates for the projects. And the subdivision expires first, so it needs to be recorded prior to its expiration. And then the final development plan can come later. It has until February to, to be, um, finalized. If the, the, the condition regarding the emergency access only restriction to the easement. Is a condition of the development plan. It's not a condition of the subdivision. If the subdivision is approved. Without any regard to the development plan and the development plan never materializes. There is no restriction at that point. Now you have three lots plus technically a fifty lot or fifty unit condominium subdivision. That have been approved on this property, on the BUE seventeen property, but there's no way to. But there's no way to restrict that access at that point. So what's been done here in order to ensure that we don't have a problem with that down the line is the city has put any, uh, uh, asked the. Developer for an agreement, which they have given us, and the agreement states that they will record a covenant on that. On their portion of the property that uh, exists in perpetuity, so no matter who they sell it to, that covenant will continue to exist. Which restricts access across the B U E seventeen property leading to that access easement to emergency purposes only. That has to be recorded within a hundred and twenty days of the recordation of the, of the track map. So four months they have after the track map records, they have to have that covenant recorded. If they do not record that within a hundred and twenty days, they have agreed. That the city will be able to withhold any and all approvals on any request made to the, to the city. By that property or for that property in the future. So essentially, unless that document is recorded. They will not get any further approvals for anything. The exception to that. Is, as as was mentioned by Mrs. Dorwin, is the bridge, and the bridge is not included in this. Because the bridge is required for their primary access point, so regardless of whether or not they, they. Um, record that, they need to be able to continue construction of the bridge once that, because construction or the the preparation for construction. Has already begun some time ago. They're waiting for a few more things to be worked out before they actually construct that bridge in earnest. The developer needed to protect their interest and say, look, you're requiring us to build a bridge, you gotta let us build the bridge, so. That provision of the agreement was acceptable to us. The important part is. That 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 emergency access component will be recorded prior to anything taking place on the property. Because um, that's what the city council promised the HOA when they approved this project.
Okay, so and then this is just to follow from a legal explanation that you made, but I'm going to just boil it down in front of the, make sure I'm saying it correctly. What I'm understanding is that what's in front of us tonight that we're discussing is that if approved with the, with the conditions of the covenant. This ensures that no matter what happens, actions on this to be entered, that with, that there will be no. Drive-through, there will be no open road access, that that's only for emergency and construction, regardless if it's sold, regardless of plans change. That is standing and is held. Furthermore, the fact is, is that this is something that's being done by the developer, and only a limitation on the developer's side of the property. So it has no impact on Ranch de Maria's ability to have self-governance. It's just a self-limitation being imposed.
Correct.
And if they don't agree to that, basically, nothing can happen there because the city refuses, except for the construction of the bridge, because we said she had to build a bridge.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I will bring it back for further discussion or possible motion.
I will move to approve the tract map. Or the, the tract map thirty-one oh six one for the B U E seventeen project.
I would second.
And, uh, I'm sorry, Ken.
Yes. Oh. The 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 initial action is to, well, you do two actions that have to be included in the motion. First is. The execution of the agreement or authorizing me to execute the agreement, and second one would be. Um, subsequent to the execution of that agreement, then authorizing the recordation of the track.
All of what you just said, my motion that to make sure that we're protecting their access and cutting it off as soon as. Construction is complete of the temporary bridge.
Okay, you're second agree to that?
Second.
Okay, uh, I have a motion to second.
Right, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi.
And Mayor King.
No. Okay, um, and I would just like to say to those in the audience here. Where were you when I argued till I was blue in the face up here on the dais to not put any residential into this element? You people should have been here back when that was going on, okay? Sir?
May we take a short break so I can get Councilmember Hornet?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
We are back in session, and we are going to move on to. Item number six, this will be story poll waiver request regarding the five eighteen mixed-use project. Uh, five eighteen avenue of flags and Creekside Village Mixed Use Project. Four eighty Avenue of Flags, and the lead on this is going to be our Planning Director, Andrea Keever. Andrea?
All right.
Please.
Good evening, Mayor King and members of City Council. There are currently two development plan modification applications in process for both the five eighteen mixed-use project and the Creekside Village Mixed Use Project. Uh, these projects are located on the corner of the Avenue of Flags and Second Street, uh, within the Avenue of Flags specific plan. And both were previously entitled a couple of years ago. Uh, development plan modifications again for both the projects have been submitted to the city and are currently being processed for public hearings by the Planning Commission. And then subsequently, the City Council. Uh, the modification requests for both projects consist of, one, height increases of of six. And nine feet respectively, and two uh, changes in use with the introduction of live work uh, units into the project. So story polls are required for projects exceeding twenty-five feet in height, and uh, said story polls shall be erected. At least thirty days prior to the first public hearing on a project. So story polls were erected for both of these projects during the original entitlement uh, review and approval process a couple of years ago. Uh, Bealdon Municipal Code does include a section which allows the City Council to waive the requirement for story polls upon a written request from the applicant. Uh, which demonstrates that these items would not provide clarification for a review of the project, which um, in the current subject case. Consist of uh, the two modification requests. So attached uh, for the City Council's consideration this evening is the applicant's story poll exemption request. Which includes a, includes a request to waive the story poll requirement, and as well as a, a narrative justification for the request and supporting exhibits. Pertaining to both projects. Uh, the applicant is present this evening and um, is available to answer any questions the council uh, may have, or uh. Perhaps further describe the request in more detail if needed. Um, the recommendation this evening is that the City Council consider the following two actions. One would be to require the installation of the story polls per Bealdon Municipal Code. Um, for both projects, or two would be to approve the applicant's request to waive the story poll requirement for both projects. Uh, that concludes my report. I'm available for questions. Um, otherwise, once again, the applicant is here as well to answer questions the council might, might have. Thank you.
Okay, I will bring it back to council. Any questions for staff? Um, John?
No, that, not staff, David?
Nope. Hudson?
Not for that.
No question.
No, and I don't have any questions myself. Uh, I will open up the public comment. Brandon, you want to come and say something, or you're just going to sit it out?
Thank you, councilmembers. Brandon Mann on behalf of the applicant. Um, I just wanted to say that the, we understand, and we did the story polls last time. I think for the four eighty, it ended up only being like six to seven thousand dollars, and we did the five eighteen two years later, it was like thirty-two. And I am in the wrong business, I should be in the story poll business. Um, but considering in in the exhibits. The impact to the street frontage, as you can see, um, from kind of the elevations. Is very minimal, or if anything, it's set back large enough that it really would not look any different. I just figured that it would be um. Efficient for everybody to not have to go through that process again, finding the contractor, spending all the money just to put them up and uh, then take them down. But um, I'm available to answer any questions and uh, put my justification in the letter.
All right, thank you. Uh, do I have any other public comments on this?
I have a question from Brandon Mann.
Yeah, yeah.
Not to interrupt.
No, go ahead.
Uh, Brandon Mann, do you have a, a timeline for, you know, Brandon Brown's project?
Yeah, so one of the things that we've been working on is the two modifications, and they're um, substantially more efficient than the previous designs. And once we get these modifications, I believe the story poll exemption is something that want the staff and um, Scott wanted to get off. Uh, kind of check off first. As soon as that's done, I mean, Scott, Andrea, I think we're. We're pretty much waiting for your guys' last checkoff, and then we're ready for Planning Commission City Council. At that point, we are happy to steamroll right ahead into condos. And get this thing built.
You said plant, we have planning commission, City Council has another say in this matter?
So uh, for the developments, because they are processing modifications to the original entitlements, those modifications do need to come forward. To the Planning Commission and subsequently the uh, City Council. There will also be um, included as part of that. Um, coming before the City Council will also be um, or um, modifications to the development agreement that was originally approved. Given the modifications to the plans, so those two things will be coming forward in the next several months, we, we anticipate.
They just can't schedule it until we decide if they have to put, because story polls have to be up thirty days prior to a hearing, if we're going to do that.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other public comment, Ms. Linda? Right, I will close public comment, bring it back to council for further discussion, possible motion.
I move to approve the story poll waiver request for both the five eighteen and the four eighty Avenue of Flags projects.
Okay, now I will second that.
Hey, uh, Councilmember Lewis.
Hi.
Mayor King.
Hi.
Councilmember Hornet.
Hi.
Um, Councilmember Sanchez.
Hi.
And Vice Mayor Silva.
Hi. All right, thank you, and we'll move on. Brandon, thanks for coming in. I've really gotten to uh, really enjoy that project, the, the way that the design and everything is. I think it's, it's going to be a great addition to the avenue. You know how I am about parking. All right, thanks again for coming in. Okay, we're going to move on to number seven, representee, repres- representative appointment. To Water and Sewer Rate Study Committee, and the lead on this is going to be Rose Hess.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Member City Council. As you recall, back in May of twenty twenty-four, the council awarded the consulting contract. To conduct the comprehensive water and sewer rate study to Wildan Financial. As part of this process, the city establishes a rate study committee. That's comprised of staff and City Council and the rate consultant to meet on progress milestones throughout the study. To go over the steps, the analysis that's been produced, and um, create the basis of certain assumptions. Made throughout the study. Um, so for staff, the members that will be part of the study is the city manager, the finance director, and the public works director. We're requesting that two of the City Council members um, be appointed to this rate study committee to follow along in this process. Uh, we will have an extensive outreach process through the community for the different classifications. And that'll be along through this entire process. It's anticipated that the study would start in August. And would run approximately through March, April, which we anticipate to have the rates adopted, so they'd be effective July first of twenty twenty-five. So with that, we're requesting that council discuss who they'd like to appoint to be on the rate study committee.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff?
Just to confirm, it's August of next month through April, March, April of twenty twenty-five, just, that's the window, okay, thank you.
Correct. It will require hundreds of hours, no, I'm just kidding.
I thought, oh, you're really.
Hundreds of thousands of hours.
I mean, I meant for staff.
What, what does it entail? Like, if we were a part of it, what is it, was it, we're doing, are we, are we checking our water? What do we do?
No, you're, you'll be part of the committee that meets uh, at progress milestones with the consultant. And reviewing their analysis, receive their presentation, um, create baseline assumptions. As far as how we want to proceed with the rate study and and review the work. So we're understanding the process that goes into the rate study itself.
Rose, it's basically like a quarterly meeting, probably.
Roughly.
More frequently.
It depends on, yeah.
The, the, the gist of having the committee involved is to ensure that there is City Council oversight of this project, because it is. It is a, it is a, a process that's going to result in rate changes for all of our ratepayers. And so we want the City Council to be comfortable with the process that's been used by bringing two council members into that. You've got that oversight and and the uh, uh, it 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 lends quite a bit of credibility to our process.
Right, and it helps with the under- your understanding of what it takes to go through the analysis. Um, that the consultant and staff goes through in order to create the rates.
Yeah, like I'm not on enough committee meetings already, I'll do it all, so.
I, I think actually, if I may be so bold, I would say it might make more sense for Councilmember Hornet and myself to do it, since there's going to be. A situation where three get council members are currently seeking reelection, it might be good to have a consistency that two people, we, we're guaranteed to still be on here afterwards. So it might make sense for Hudson to be on there.
On the other side of that, we got nothing to lose, we get voted out, right? You're the one, you're the ones that are going to be here, have to.
Have the discussions, you don't want to have to have them go back and explain the history in meeting one that they already explained in meeting three. Because now it's more new people, like it doesn't make sense to have to reinvent the wheel after an election in the event that we're not here and not. Let's hope that's not the case, but in the event that it is, it, it's a waste of everybody's time.
I will acquiesce to that and turn it over to David.
Sounds good.
So there's your two.
Do we need a motion for that, or is it just?
I think.
I'm okay with consensus.
Yeah, anybody opposed? No, hearing none, uh, if that, we will put uh, Hudson and David on that committee. Okay, moving on to our last issue, that'll be a schedule update for all the new library construction project, and this will be once again, Rose Hess.
Thank you, sir. So. The progress of the library is moving forward. At a slower rate than we anticipated. We've had quite a bit of delays initially, starting a lot to do with weather. When we had a lot of the rains, we're working on foundations, because we had to establish stronger, larger, heavier foundations. To create new structural supports, structural improvements for the um, library. We had a lot of water intrusion issues, that caused a good bulk of the delays right there, almost a month, maybe so. Um, because water table just came up very high, and that started pretty much immediately with the very light rains that we started. Um, at the beginning of January. Uh, between that and additional structural and. And not quite design, I guess, design changes, you could say, once we started removing walls, ceilings, everything, things were. Rather different than what were on the plans that we had available for the building, so we had a lot of change on that. Coordinating with the structural, electrical, mechanical engineers on the project and doing modifications materially times, so. Um, bottom line is, at this point of time of the game, we are looking at an anticipated construction completion. Date of October twenty twenty-four, and that is for um. Completion of our contractors' work. It's exterior, interior with. The, the built-in cabinets, things like that. Aside from that, the library itself needs. Work approximating maybe about a month, I'm Scott, uh, for their move-in portion to get set up with their equipment. Um, computers, books, et cetera, make things habitable and operatable for themselves. We'll have the basics and everything set up. Um, so we'd be looking sometime as far as like opening, opening roughly in in the November-ish timeframe. Um, on that note, and a very related old library project. Our C D B G project, it's, the two are tied together because of the logistics of having the old library move out of this one. And into the new one. So the C D B G project has been somewhat on hold. We had issued a notice to proceed earlier in the year for them to start ordering equipment, so that they can be ready to go whenever. We're ready to go. Um, the issue with that is the C D B G grant had a deadline originally of June thirtieth, and we've requested an extension. And we've been allotted one for December thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. So as we're getting closer, even if we're done in October, we're, we're looking at an overlap and. So as we're getting closer, even if we're done in October, we're we're looking at an overlap and it puts the construction start date for here. The duration is six weeks. Um with holidays and things like that, we're really pushing the the deadline as far as when we could um being compliant, make sure we don't get rid, you know, we don't lose the grant monies. We have to be completed with construction by end of December. So ideally, we're looking at coordinating with the library and that transition to move from here to there. Possibly storing their equipment, their books and things like that in a pod. Um at some time in order to get the work started at this library so we don't lose the grant monies for that because that's a significant balance about hundred thirty, hundred forty eight, something to that amount. No, I think it's a little bit larger, actually. Hundred and eighty eight thousand. Thank you, Chanel. Um so it's a significant amount that we don't. Um so with that, that's the update we have. We you know, our goal is to have minimal minimal downtime for the library. Um we're currently looking at options to see, you know, is it possible to have a pop up somewhere? Um but we're looking at a couple of months maybe for a library to be closed. Um it may not be worth the the logistical nightmare of trying to create a little area for and 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 see how that would work and finding a location. We might be fi, you know, just by time we find a spot that would be suitable. It it may be October at that point. So that is something that um Scott and I are are working on and wanted to bring that to your guys' attention. We can answer any questions.
Back to staff for any questions, John?
I use if uh if it came to it, could we let them use this and we could go meet somewhere else for a couple of months? Or just uh where?
Well, this this space isn't big enough for the library to occupy. It could serve as a a pop up location potentially or a temporary location, a a small room. Uh we'd have to talk to library staff about that. Where we would meet, we could meet at, you know, we could we could meet in room A of of the rec center potentially. Um for a couple of months or Yeah, it's it's more difficult, yeah.
Yeah, right, because of all the communications that we have. It'd be pretty difficult to do that, yes.
And I know one of the things that has been a concern in the past, like when the libraries close, is like the access for the public and the students after hours to just be to have access to internet, things like that. Um and we could still provide that and make a portion of our internet access for this um office available. That you can reach that out in in the lobby or in front of the building as they have in the past for the library. Um so that's that's a if that's a concern, still that may come up, though that can be accommodated.
Yeah, that's that's just gonna be growing pains.
Right.
Well, I was just thinking like it sounds like we need some kind of storage area and this is not the first I've heard of that. Right, we also have potential storage issues if we're gonna enforce a note, food side vendor ordinance. Um just wondering if it behooves us to look into procuring something that we can add some storage.
We could look into that as an option to renting a a pod or something is is buying a cargo container.
Yeah.
Purchasing something like that and storing it on a on a city, a piece of city owned property. Um we can evaluate the cost of that and and get back to the council if that's.
I I think those are fairly inexpensive, aren't they? Cargo, used cargo containers. Okay.
Yeah.
That's like a big one. For a big D train is five grand. They have the smaller ones and they were like three grand.
Sure, I mean, we 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 could certainly use the storage. We we'd find a location that might be suitable for placing it. And then it's just a matter of, you know, logistically, then we'd have to move everything from here to there, which is fine.
Yeah.
But we it we it just requires a little bit of of coordination and and research on our part to figure out what's the best approach, but we can bring that back.
Yeah, and I think what we were looking at um as far as packing the library and 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 moving it is actually renting one of those the pods. Because they can pack it, we can have it dropped off here, they can pack, they can load the pod and the pod, we can have them move it to the Williston property. And then they can unlock unpack there once it's ready to go.
Yeah, and that's that that's fairly reasonable too. And we're not moving it very far, so you know, a lot of the big expense in that is if you're gonna move to Texas, you know, it's costs all the money. Question? Um I'm gonna close out any questions that you guys may have, no? Uh any public comment on this? Uh okay, no, seeing no hands up.
Pam, you wanna speak on this or?
Pam, did you have, wanna put any uh have any input on this?
You're muted.
You're muted.
You're muted, Pam.
Pam, we can't hear you.
Can you unmute her?
I can't, but I can ask her to unmute here.
Oh, sorry. Am I unmuted now?
Yes.
My husband would love to have that button, by the way. So so the question was like if there's a problem with um having internet or whatever. We can keep that, we can keep the building open late and we'll like keep it open, lock it up, whatever, so that everybody can have internet access if that is the issue. So because we don't have a lot of construction going on, we can have like tables and things set up if kids or whoever needs that internet access, they can, we can make it possible that they can come in and do that.
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pam. Uh any other public comment on this? And this is just a receive.
Actually, um we're requesting that um council authorize staff to undertake the library closures as necessary.
Uh okay, I do have one other question. The the after the rains, the whole basement of that was full of water. Has that been completely covered with concrete from tip to tail? So that you you won't have an issue with with heavy rains again in there and they
No.
Obviously, they put some kind of a drainage in there because that seemed like it was a big issue and it slowed down the project quite a bit because was full of water from the rains. Okay, I'm glad that happened. Uh okay, um anybody wanna, I'll bring it back to council for a motion or a, can we do this with consensus, council? Okay.
Just one question before I'm sorry before you call it. So you said the staff direction to close the library. We're obviously getting notice of when closures are gonna occur.
Right, we're we're gonna coordinate with library staff to see logistically how much time they need, et cetera. Um and then we'll we'll
Promulgate.
Let you guys know before.
Yeah, yeah, it's at some point in time, it's gonna have to happen.
No, I understand. I just, you know, let everybody know.
Okay. All right, uh anybody opposed to that? No, seeing none? Okay, uh I'll go ahead and direct staff to do that. Um let us move on to city manager's report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Brief items tonight. They've both been discussed previously. The first one is this Saturday. River View Park, eleven to two is Beelton Barbecue Bonanza. All are invited. Come on out, have some lunch. Uh please bring your postcards that were sent to you. If you don't have your postcard, bring your ID that shows that you are actually a Beelton resident and you can come eat.
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Um if someone has guests from out of town, is there like a cash price or they bring?
We are, we are making arrangements for those who who show up who are from out of town. Uh there is a, I believe it's a donation of five dollars we're asking for 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 them. But the uh the object here is to wait until the line has diminished and we know that that uh we're not gonna run out of food for residents that have shown up. That we don't wanna pack the line with people that are non-residents and have our residents be left out. So uh it'll be a little coordination on our end, but we've
So a friend of mine that's that has company in town, it's coming, but
Yeah.
They don't have to eat, but anybody can come down.
Oh, yeah, anybody can come to the park. Okay, absolutely. Just secondly, just a reminder, our next meeting is August eighth. Uh might be a little longer than we typically have meetings for because it'll be our only meeting in August and we do have a few items that need to happen uh before September. So um next week, August, or excuse me, two weeks from now, August eighth, and then uh following that, we will not have another meeting until September. All right.
And before you conclude on that, Scott, um I think we had a discussion about the October meeting. Where we will be at League of Cities. Is that, have you taken a look at that to see?
It's, oh, the 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 meeting, oh, is it then, I'll I'll, we'll take a look, we'll make sure we have that coordinated. What uh what's it?
No, that's J P I A.
J P I A, sixteen through eighteen, I believe. That's the third, so it's the J P I A conference that's the conflict.
There's a meeting right in the middle of that, so I'm thinking maybe we could either have a special.
We'll 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 take a look at.
See what kind of, see what kind of items you have and possibly have a special for that. Because I wanted to get that well in advance to where we're not going, oh.
No, no, we'll 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 work that out, but yes, it's the J P I A meeting. It may just be you and I.
Okay.
But right now you two are registered, that's it. We also register me.
But you guys need to give me dates out and all of that as far as when you want. Which one? The league?
Okay, talk to her offline. Uh councilor, have anything? I will conclude this meeting until August eighth to twenty twenty four at six P M.